Yep.
I'd like to call the village council work session meeting, October 25th, 2018 to order. First up is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, removals, changes?
I have two requests.
Okay.
The one, I'd like to add public comments. We have a pretty good crowd and that goes hand in hand with the charter. And then, you know, last meeting, I think we had a good discussion about just going ahead and pushing it to a vote and maybe even just squashing it all together. And I'd like to consider just squashing it all together rather than continue to put the public through this. And there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of emails, a lot of people come to speak. And I was, Nick, it was your idea originally, and I'm wondering if you would consider just...
Well, I mean, right now, we're just doing the...
Well, that would mean taking it off the agenda, I would think. That's the two things I have.
So are you trying to add public comment, or are you trying to remove it from the agenda? Or are you just trying to see which of the options?
Two options, two separate, two separate things.
So you're adding public comments and you want to remove the charter discussion?
I guess the reason I put them together is if Nick's willing to remove the charter discussion completely, then the public may not need to speak.
I mean, I'd still like to talk about the charter discussion. I didn't really get a lot of time to speak on that at the last meeting since we were running into the deadline. So I'd like to talk about it.
So let's do it in...
I'm fine with public comment. If you guys want to add public comment, that's fine.
I'm fine with public comment.
Okay. So we'll add public comment before the administrators' report?
It goes without saying, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, and then we'll keep discussion for the unfinished business B, adoption of OR 201-8-1-2.
Of course, I just added that not knowing if anyone wants to speak, but we'll need a sign out, sign in sheet, I guess.
Yeah. I guess my only thing would maybe be to move the, move that from B to A.
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, move that up from B to A.
Gotcha.
Just swap them around. And then we need to remove debate section only from rules of procedure since it should be all of the rule changes?
And again, because I think we're talking about process, I just wanted to, until I know what we're doing with the minutes, if we could remove those and put them to unfinished business as well. Or, sorry, I guess it would be unfinished, yeah.
The A for consent?
Yeah, sorry.
So you have some additions to it, or are you just not ready?
Well, I have like these minor corrections, but I was, I've been holding off because I know that staff was working on process for changing things, so I didn't know what the process was. So in the meantime...
All right, so make that D?
Yes, please. Sorry, just catching up.
I am allowed to speak.
Nobody else wants to speak? That's it?
Okay.
Michael, did this go completely away?
Yeah, everybody's seen it.
Oh, sorry.
Is my name on it, Barbie?
I have Alice.
Yeah, that's me.
Did we, saw staff email about survey questions? Do we need to talk about that? Or do you need direction? Do you, or leave it?
Well, unless y'all want to bring it up, the only, the only kind of direction that I had said was this is what was going on. So if anybody wants anything different than that, I sent.
Fine, do you need, I just want it up.
I just kind of remembered it being out there.
Okay.
Any other changes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
As amended.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, public comment. Do we have just one?
Yes.
Okay, Kim, can I sit or do I have to?
You can sit. Just a reminder, just state your name, address, and you have three minutes. I'm going to do the high-tech thing and give you three minutes.
Okay.
And it'll be obnoxious. We're not trying to keep over watching.
I'll be listening.
Okay.
Alice Frederick, 3000 Refill Drive, Marvin. I just wanted to come out and, you know, I read all this stuff on Nextdoor about people are against this, against that. I am solely for the mayor being allowed to vote at stuff. Many times, I've sat at this council meeting and I've seen maybe things passed that shouldn't have passed, and it's because of the rule that he didn't have a vote. In one case, an instance where someone on this council has cost this village money fighting things, and the vote passed two to one because one person was absent who was a council person. I don't think that, you know, when you see stuff on Nextdoor, it's very difficult to be in the political view of so much criticism going on, and then people all of a sudden get in a tither and show up at a meeting. So I just wanted to come here and state that I am for the mayor voting, and if the quickest way to get this done is by referendum, then, which I doubt it is, I mean, people might think that's a little fair, a little more fair to do it that way. But if they want to vote on it today and let the mayor vote, I am all for that. We elect the mayor. We don't elect theoretically a figurehead to sometimes vote. He has to be well versed also on the topics. So why not be a participant, an active participant at every meeting and not just wait, gee, am I going to get a chance to vote and break a tie or something? So that's all I have to say.
All right.
Vote on it and pass it.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think we have anyone else. Is that correct? All right. Thank you for your comments. Next up is administrators' report. We have Christina hanging there.
Good morning. So I have a lot of different things. First, I'm just going to go down the list. Law enforcement, as we discussed, as we discussed at the previous meeting, put a list of jurisdictions and if they require law enforcement attendance at their meetings. So I just, I just wanted to get clarification from council as to what their desires are. And I know I'm kind of jumping the gun with discussions of rules of procedure changes of going into work sessions a little differently than what we have in the past. But the intention is if we pass the rules of procedure with the work session being primarily for planning purposes only, we would only need our state law enforcement at the regular meetings when large attendance is required. So that would cut down on that requirement, so to say. But again, I'm still defining large crowds as ten or more, in which we would invite them, but we're open to suggestions, changes, clarification from y'all as to your desires.
It looks like there's a lot of, a lot of towns and small towns that have theirs in attendance.
That, that is, there's more yeses than there are no's. So that is, I don't know the exact population makeups of which ones. I didn't review it with a lot of scrutiny, but there are more yeses than no's. And my intention would be only at work sessions. I mean, we can do it, and if it doesn't work, we can change it back. But I just wanted to get direction from you all.
Do you need a please? I'm sorry, Nick.
So you said only at work, you mean only at work?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have to say please.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Like I've said before, the only reason I'm against it is it either costs us money or it costs us opportunity. If the sheriffs in here and not out there, you know, there's five, six, seven, there's a few of us, there's 5,000 people out there. I'd rather see them out there. And I don't mean to be a dead horse. I just don't agree with it unless we know something especially contentious is on the agenda and we've got 60 people coming. I don't see any torches or pitchforks out here, and I don't expect any at the next meeting. But anyways, that's where I'm at.
And it honestly does not matter to me either way. I just want a direction from you all as to what my expectations are, when to invite them, and when not to invite them. So I just need direction.
Nick had an opinion.
Hi, oh, sorry, go ahead.
He started speaking.
And I mean, I, I think, you know, we don't need them, and, you know, when we have three people, you know, show up, everybody is. I think we would probably, you know, when we have a meeting where we anticipate we're going to get a large group, then we would want to definitely, you know, definitely have them at that kind of meeting. But we're getting, most meetings we have, we have three or four people maybe show up. So I don't think that we need that.
And what might you define as large?
Where we have to move locations.
Yeah, we have to move locations, basically. If it becomes too many for here, then...
And if it's, if it's not like a contentious reason that we're moving, it just has to, then I don't think so. But I think if we've got stuff, I know, I would be more comfortable with it.
If we're going to do it, that's a good trigger. I would agree with the trigger if we're going to do it.
Yeah, all I was going to say was I actually was more in favor of what you'd written at the last meeting in terms of having a crowd size. It looks like you're trying to gauge that. So that was my comment is, I wouldn't have it at every meeting. I wasn't sure if that was sort of the point behind the chart. But at this point, I liked what you wrote last time, and I was fine with that. And anything else, as long as we have a provision, I think I've said before, and we're consistent about applying it so nobody's off guard when all of a sudden there's an officer at a meeting. That's, that's my only concern, that we're consistent and we have a policy.
What I'm hearing is, so it should be, if we're going to do it just for the regular meetings, the work sessions, not necessarily. When I make a suggestion that we have a regular meeting and only three people show up, I assume we have to arrange for that officer to be here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we can make a suggestion, so he's already going to be on duty, then if we only have three or three people, and we don't think that there's really a need for them, then we can excuse him to go out and patrol the neighborhood. And we would want him available if something were to get out of hand and stuff. But to satisfy you, Robert, I mean, to say, look, he's, it looks like the majority of these communities have an officer available to them. And if it's something that's, nothing's really on the agenda, but I think as a regular scheduled item, he's scheduled to be here. And we say, look, maybe even put him on to give us a quick update on what's happening in the community. And then we can excuse him to be just kind of patrolling the neighborhoods for that matter. So if that's okay with you guys.
I think that's a really good compromise.
So would y'all like me to actually create a rules of procedure, or you just want us to be this common practice that we actually utilize?
Yeah, I think what we'd have to do then is we'd have to, as we have him adjust his hours, that he will be working them hours when we have the, you know, to make his schedule, he works them hours when we're having a meeting. And again, if there's only three people, we say, go patrol, whatever.
And you'll have to excuse me if I didn't hear a time. I'm still getting over a cold because I'm having trouble hearing sometimes. But again, I'll go back to what you wrote last time, which was roughly 10 or more. And I don't know if we established a threshold because I hear well when there's a lot or when we move locations. But I really feel like I think it's best to, for staff, if they know exactly what that threshold is, again, in line with what I've said about consistent policy.
Well, I mean, from what, from what Joe was saying, or what probably is, the thing is if we have him adjusted his hours, that he's working that time. And then if we have three, we have three, and he just goes, does his patrol. If we have 20, then maybe he stays.
So it doesn't matter the number?
So you're saying, you're saying what's the threshold where he stays?
Yes, I'm not disagreeing with anything that is, what I'm saying is, is that in that, within that parameter, give staff a clear direction of what that number is so that they know when they're pulling him off into the, into the meeting.
Why, I think we would, I would, I would say, vote, we would vote on it and say, look, hey, can we excuse him to go patrol while he's here? He's automatically scheduled to be here every Tuesday. And then if it's...
And he used to do a report, right, Joe?
He did.
My apologies.
So if he's on there to do the report, and then when he's done, we can just...
If we need him to stay, then we need him to stay. Or if we know that we're going to be moving and there's contentious stuff, then he just knows that he's going to be staying.
And I guess we would leave it up to Christina to decide. All right, and Deputy Swan, does that mean he's, he's adjusting his schedule and working 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM? Or is he coming in special for the meeting with a minimum three hour block or whatever he's comfortable with?
I mean, if it's possible, it would be better, obviously, for him to change his schedule so we don't incur, you know, in addition.
Yeah.
Right.
Beforehand meal.
Well, then let me ask the staff whether they prefer on that day, for example, if that's what we're talking about. Is it easier for staff to implement something like that? They're here anyway, the deputy, but you sort of, is it better to have a number or a threshold in mind in terms of saying, yeah, you can go or you can stay? Or is it just, are you better, feeling better with just a judgment call?
I think we could probably do a judgment call. And if we feel uneasy about it, or if y'all feel uneasy about how it's being applied, then we just revisit it at that point, if everyone's okay with that.
I'm fine with it. I just, I know I always found it easier if I knew exactly what that threshold was, but I don't know what it'd be like.
Satisfies my concerns is if we don't need him, he can go patrol and the public gets the use of him.
So just so I'm clear, it's to adjust his schedule from now forward, having attendance being required at the regular meetings with a report ready. If he isn't needed, we'll excuse him at that point in time. If he is needed, he'll stay.
If he has... We'll excuse him to go out and patrol.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Well, yeah, he should, because it's once a month, so.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
And then the second, workloads and planning, I mean, I have some things coming down the line that I'm going to have to talk about, planning resources. I'm not fully prepared to really talk about that right now. I just want to let you know that there is some things that are changing that need to be addressed. And I hope to have some, some questions resolved between now and the November meeting. So I'm going to add this as a more in-depth discussion at the November meeting, if y'all are okay with that. If you want to have any questions or comments about that at all. Okay. And then the next meeting, the next quasi judicial training, I'd sent a few different dates and times out for training that needs to take place. Kim and Nick have responded back with October 31st.
Should we dress up?
I think you did, or maybe...
Yeah, I'm going to say, unfortunately, I'm only available the 13th on these three dates.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know why I saw this.
Let me dress up.
Say again.
I thought we could dress up. It's Halloween.
Does, do any of y'all have availability on these other dates to come for this? If you don't, I'll make arrangements after the fact.
We're allowed to dress up.
Come on, it'll be fun.
So we're actually doing, trying to figure out a date to do it here, and it's for how long?
It's for about an hour or less.
Are we going to get us lunch?
November 13th is probably to the regularly scheduled meeting, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah, same.
I like that better.
You like...
We can't all do it together.
Oh.
We can. I mean, we can call a special meeting for it.
When you pay the fee, does it allow for two different dates? Because if there's any concern about quorum, I could do either Halloween or I could do the 13th. So I'm flexible with both dates.
Well, if y'all, if everyone wants to do it on the 13th, we can just call a special meeting.
I'm fine.
I prefer the 13th.
I have childcare issues.
On the 13th?
You can do the 31st. I mean, we can do it on the 31st.
Yeah, because I've got Jason. I don't, I mean, Mike won't be here by then.
Can we, can we have two dates for it? And if it turns out my, my schedule changes a lot, if mine changes, maybe I'll come in on the 31st and knock it out. If I'm not available, come on the 13th with it for the rest.
I can, I can manage that. It's always a tough day, but yeah, on the 31st.
It's a very tough day.
So I'm trying to not do three of you at one time.
Nick's not available on the 31st.
Yes, but if you're going to be on the 31st, then we've got to work it out between y'all two.
I can, I can, I can manage it on the 31st, and I can arrange the others as well. So I don't think I can...
But you're saying it's only an hour?
Correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll commit to the 31st.
Okay, and then you'll do, that's fine. I'll do it, sure. You'll do the 13th?
Oh, whatever.
Oh, you do two? You do two?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, we're trying to split, still we're trying to split everybody?
Well, we're not, we don't have to, but if Kim's already committed to the 31st, then I can only pick one of you.
There's three of us.
Can you just say that there's going to be a quorum to watch the video?
We can. I mean, we can do that.
And it's not a live webinar, webinar? It's where you ask questions or anything?
No, it is not. No. The intention of this is, it's, this is a free training that we get through our league membership. So we actually will watch a webinar on these evidentiary hearings and how to make decisions. It's pretty generic in its nature, but we, you know, we need to have a refresher course when we've got some things coming down the line. The second part of the proposed training is to do a live training, and I'm trying to combine perhaps Weddington and Waxall because it's $1,500. So I'm, I'm trying to do a cost share with them, and let's all get together and do a special meeting with all of us and do the training so that we can have some savings generated there.
So there's no question and answer period in this portion?
No.
Okay.
If, if we have questions that we can't answer, the process would be for me to write them down and get answers and get them back to you all.
So now that I, sorry, I'm a little slow today. If it's easier for me to go on the 31st, put me wherever you need me.
Okay. I'll work it out with you guys as far as your scheduling. Kim, you can just plan on coming on the 31st as you originally intended.
Yep.
Everyone else, we'll do a special meeting. Barbie, if you can prepare the notice for the 13th for the training. So those that can't get it addressed between now and then, we'll do it in a special meeting.
And Michael, is I'm going to commit on 31st also?
Okay, and then we'll just have to, just so we're clear.
But we're not for, so we're, we would be good.
We'll, we'll get it worked out.
I mean, can't you just say that we're doing a training and we don't have to call a special meeting, do we? We're not going to talk about it.
We don't, yeah, we can just...
You can do a potential quorum of council.
We can do that. We can just notify. We don't technically have to, but for transparency, we have.
We do talk about it. It can only be about questions or concerns we have about this.
So this one's free, what we're doing?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we just need a special, a potential quorum notice on the 31st?
On the 31st and the 13th. Okay. It's, it's usually about $350, but because we have that membership with the league, it's free.
And then so that, so the $1,500 is the in-person training? We've got it, okay.
Does it make sense to have any other boards look at this, or just because we're recommend, we're, we're like a recommending board or just the council?
So the planning board?
Planning board will be in attendance to those as well.
These dates?
Yes.
Do we know who's coming when?
I do not. The last thing that I have, actually, two more things. I've got one I need to talk about that I haven't added. The Eford Park electrical update. So I put a memo in there that kind of highlights what we've done thus far. I think we're good to go with electric in that area. So I don't think there's any questions or problems that need to be addressed there.
So we're updating it?
We are not updating it.
You're not updating it.
Basically, what happened in, with previous events is there's, all of the receptacles are GFCI. No one would have ever known that unless they would have went out there and tested them, which is not what people typically do. There is one receptacle that's not, and that's the one that we need to primarily pull from.
Okay.
So that we don't have issues.
Pop them.
We can put another circuit in there, and Robert E. Correctm if I'm wrong, we can put another circuit in. But I think that we've addressed that we just need to use a different receptacle for certain things.
All the perimeter outlets are GFI per code, but there's a dedicated outlet right next to the box with the tone breaker. So if there's something heavy duty, just plug into that.
And most GFIs have the little popper thing in the middle, so...
They didn't?
The ones on the outside don't because it's connected internally. So no one would have ever known any difference, so.
What, no one would have known that GFIs, they trip when there's surge, that's what they're made for. So if you have a, what was it, a curricid machine? If the things kick on, that's when they ramp up and they trip. They can sit there all day and not trip. But if you turn three of them on at once, they trip.
And there, there were lights, there was, we didn't have a band, so we had a DJ. I'm just trying to think to make sure.
Second it ramps up, they trip.
Yeah.
You just pull the vacuum cleaner into a GFI, it's going to trip.
My blow jar does more.
But you do have a dedicated outlet right there next to the box.
Yes. So we'll change some things around, and we shouldn't have that issue.
As long as your gears are good.
I think that was the box we used though last time. Is that what you mean? I don't know anything about this.
It all feeds into the same box. There's either someone added it after the fact, or it was there and you didn't know it. But there is a outlet to the right of the box that is dedicated. But it all, still only carry 15 amps.
Okay. We're going to try to spread out some stuff to the bathrooms, too, so people won't have that problem. But it, it, no one would have ever known that last year because they weren't identified as, so it would have...
Well, I'll, I'll just say, I'll say this for the record, you know, Mike is an electrical engineer, and he went through it and didn't note, I feel odd that he didn't, wouldn't have noticed that. So maybe you can talk to him and find out. I don't know, but he might have some other...
Okay.
He may have noticed or observed something else that I didn't. I just don't know much about it.
Okay. The last thing I want to let y'all know is, at one of the previous meetings, I had requested to do speed limit, potential modifications on Marvin Road. Contact the DOT. They're going to be doing a study, a speed limit study on that road. So you may see some surveyors, some action going on in that area. Just wanted to give you a heads up in case you were wondering what was going on.
They're going to, when you say survey, is that, you mean put the lines out?
I believe that's what they're going to do, studying what the speed limit is.
Oh, like across the road.
Okay.
They have to go through their process to make sure it's okay for us to...
But they're open to moving the speed limit down to 35, is what you're saying?
Once they get the, the study back to see if it's feasible in their terms, I think. They, they didn't say yes or no.
Because that's what you need to put in a crosswalk, correct?
You would need to reduce the speed limit, yes.
Okay. And that's what we're potentially talking about from where Firethorn meets in this group.
I owe $5. I should say my neighborhood.
It's a joke.
Oh, hilarious. Sorry.
It's actually a rule of procedure.
It's a rule of procedure. I have to buy candy or something, or use my neighborhood name. But we talked about a safe way, passage, because people using golf carts or whatever to, whether they're coming from Marvin or wherever, eventually, that's a, an access point that was a safe, long line of sight. But the requirement was to move the speed limit in that area only. After that, I mean, that's, I guess, the biggest, the biggest concern is actually on the corner of Joe Carr and Marvin, which is where, and I think there should be enough accident reports. I think our neighborhood even could provide you, or the neighbor across the street could provide you with enough accident reports.
We've got to look support fence back.
And just for those that are attending tonight, and those that may be listening to the audio, I did send an email to council last night that kind of dictated some of our law enforcement changes that are going to take place over the next couple of days. We currently have officers at Marvin School and Joe Carr, and Joe Carr and Marvin with the roundabout detours. And Union County has really discovered some dangers at Newtown and Marvin, that they want two officers present instead of one, just because it's around that curve. So as soon as the roundabouts open, which is hopefully going to be tomorrow, fingers crossed, you will not see an officer at Marvin School anymore or Joe Carr. We will only see two officers at Newtown and Marvin. And we will continue to monitor that and see if we need to address that after the fact. But hopefully with the change of traffic patterns, we will see a reduction in some of that traffic, and we'll just continue to monitor.
And we're just going to have them there in the evenings?
Correct.
As we're on that subject and stuff, and not to get off subject, but that road is scheduled to open up Friday, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If everything goes as planned.
Okay. It's DOT saying that, not the council to be clear. But I know you and I have talked about this, but I'd like the council to start considering and maybe put feelers out there about how we address that without dealing with an officer going forward. And Christina and I talked about this, so just kind of put it in the back of your mind is, is if we took Marvin Road and we did cement barricades as you're coming from my neighborhood, I won't say it, and it's a right turn only out of there, meaning that you can go to South Carolina, but you can't go to the, and then we continue to use the other way. So then that eliminates a lot of the traffic concerns, and people start realizing that they can't, they're only going to be able to go south on that, and they'll take a different route until that corner gets fixed. It's, I mean, we're going to spend probably $50,000, but I was trying to think of all the things that, you know, it probably would affect my neighborhood more because we like to use this to go, to go that way. But if it's a right turn only as you come down Marvin, I think that addresses the chances of accidents occurring on that corner until that goes into a roundabout.
Yeah, my only concern with that would be was, it would then push people to go down Joe Carr, you know? So you have that, instead of coming down and going left.
For those that are going left.
They'd use Joe Carr as the, as the road, and we have sheriffs now that need, you know, for traffic damage.
Well, I'm just looking from a safety standpoint. I mean, it's, you know...
Well, just to piggyback that, I worry about metal lark. I mean, I've been there 30 years, being able to access.
That's another one. We can consider a right turn only out of there, and meaning that they can't go to South Carolina. But to get to South Carolina, they would just have to go down this roundabout, do a complete loop, and go left, which is, you know, a half mile. It's not far, but it's, I've been in that, coming out of metal lark. I've had I've been in that, coming out of metal arc, I've had DOT with me sitting in the car, and we have buses doing that every day, twice a day, coming out of that corner with a blind corner, and until that roundabout gets fixed, I'm just looking, it's not on the agenda, but it's something that.
If you wanna add to, I, I'm happy to discuss it.
I, I'd like at least DOT to be looking at it and see if what, how does it affect everything else.
DOT, DOT, I'm sorry, has kind of discussed that with me initially, just to kind of get some feedback and to get the discussion going. Um, we're kind of waiting for them to officially say, uh, you know, a ruling on this roundabout when it's gonna take place. So until we know for a fact that the roundabout's gonna be delayed, I mean, because as it stands right now, it's still slated for next year, um.
But they haven't even come out with a new design yet, correct?
Correct. I don't know if the, the design is gonna change. So I, I asked them to have an update back for me, back for me in November, so we can add it in the November meeting. Um, I'm just not sure if we're gonna be fully ready to talk about with DOT, because DOT's gonna have to approve it too. We can talk about it and let them know that we're interested in it, for sure.
If you wanna add it as a, if she doesn't have the information, we can push it to the next organization.
Don't they initially come out with a detour plan as well, and see, you know, to when they, when they do this? They usually come out a detour plan, and I'm just saying that, that it will spur us to talk about it, probably, right, at the right time? So just bookmark.
And then we can push back, I would, a- aside from metal arc, aside from people riding down Joe Carr, is, um, these roundabouts are gonna need some time for people to adjust as it is. So I'm not sure changing, until this roundabout's ready to go, changing traffic patterns while people are trying to figure this out is maybe in our best interest.
But thank you for sending out the information on how to navigate it.
Absolutely.
Is there, is there sound to that?
There's a video too.
No, there's.
Okay, 'cause I was trying to get the sound of that. I played it and I, I, I tell you, they couldn't have picked a worse roundabout to. Because all you do is look at it and it is, it's a mess. I mean, I, I'd be scared to go into this roundabout with everything going on.
Mexico City roundabout.
I mean, it looks like a brand new roundabout put in, but it's a, I think it's almost like a double roundabout, but it, it doesn't have any, anybody speaking, it doesn't.
Can we get a simpler one?
It'd be nice to have something for the public, because that's what we've heard, that there's nothing, but DOT's supposed to, is that DOT's?
It is.
Can they give us a simpler one to look at?
But there's nobody speaking in it, it just shows you, it, all you're doing is looking at something and it looks, actually.
Sorry, what were you?
I was, I was just gonna bring up that, you know, at Marvin and, and Newtown, the right, there is now, there's a hole that, you know, in order to make the right turn, you actually have to swing out and almost go into the other lane and you make the right turn and you get cars coming.
Did you check on that?
We have DOT to fix it.
I know, but now it's even worse than it is.
You and I drove with Underwood Pass there and he got someone out, but all they did was stick gravel in the hole, it just kicks.
Did you check on that, Christine?
They said they were gonna fix it Friday.
Fix it means they just add gravel.
They keep adding gravel to it though, ask them for a patch if you don't mind.
We have someone in our neighborhood, we might be able to land out.
They actually came out there and they, and I'm not, I don't mean to complain, but.
We have Neil who goes around and he patches our holes.
They pass the holes in the middle of the road, but the, the main concern of, of all of ours was where that gravel gets kicked down and makes, one, it makes your tires slick as you're trying to make a dangerous right turn, and two, you, you fall into the hole. Well, they came out and they added gravel. They passed the hole here, but they added gravel there.
But, well, let's, let's add that to the, if you don't mind, where we can discuss those corners with that, but I, I understand your point. It may take some time for people to get used to this, but, um, let's just cross our fingers and hope they open it up by Friday, so. Okay, um, anything else?
That is all I have.
Alright, thank you. Um, next up is consent agenda, uh, need a motion to approve the consent items?
As amended.
As amended?
As amended?
Sorry, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next up, we have unfinished business, uh, A now is consider adoption of ROR dash two oh one eight dash one oh dash O two ordinance to consider many in village charter to allow mayor to vote on all matters.
Can I go first, since I didn't really get a lot of?
Sure.
Is that okay with everybody? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, thanks for letting me go first. I've talked to a lot of people in person, both who are for the change and those who oppose it, we were able to have really constructive conversations on the topic, and I've listened to those who spoke in the public hearings and in meetings, contrary to popular belief. Um, I was listening, even when some neighbors were calling the names and not being very constructive. I've even taught my nine-year-old that calling names isn't nice or constructive, so, but I was listening. I just saw that myself, Joe and Nick were called assholes on Nextdoor by.
Quote unquote.
Uh, quote unquote, by Michael Kokosa from Marvin Creek, um, and he said that we all need to be investigated. And I agree with that. Um, I said that in the meeting months ago, and I think it's a great idea, and with all the noises going on, I think I'll go ahead and go to the state board of elections and ask for that investigation. I've prayed on this, I have thought long and hard on this, and it seems pretty clear. Uh, my approach for the mayor voting has changed. The rationale for the change hasn't, um, and it remains very strong, but let's let the public decide. If that's what everybody wants, then I'm for that. I heard one neighbor say that he doesn't care if the mayor votes or not, but the people need to decide that, so here's what I propose. Instead of the council mandating a change for the charter, but let's place a measure on the ballot next November that will evaluate two things, allowing the mayor to vote and adding additional council members. Um, we should allow the public to vote on important matters, but by doing this, it's gonna allow us the opportunity to inform the public on why we want the change and why we need this change. The consequences are out there. We have Mary sitting in a position that may or may not be valid. It's caused turmoil in our village. The cause for this turmoil, there is a cause of that turmoil, and I want people to understand how we got here and how Robert and Ron dismissed our attorney's advice and said that they didn't need her help. While people have the right to hear what's transpired, and I'm happy to take the next year to talk to whoever actually wants to talk about it. There'll be facts and not propaganda. Our council structure was exploited by its own members, and now there are consequences and it's not fair to the village. I'm still relatively new to the position, and when the charter change was proposed, I went back and did my homework and saw that the council had changed the charter twice in the past two years, not putting it to a vote to the people, um, so you guys should go back and look at that. Uh, the second change may not have been properly executed, but that's a discussion for another time. So again, I propose that we put it to a vote next November and we add to allow the mayor to vote, and we add adding additional seats to the council. By doing this, it'll allow the public to be transparent, and the village will understand the need for these protections. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
Yep.
I just wanna be sure I'm, I'm understanding. Are you saying that you wanna take the current ordinance and amend that current ordinance? Is that what you're ass proposing?
I'm saying that we're not gonna, I propose that we don't vote on this today, and that we put it on, uh, the ballot for next November. But we add both items.
So put it on the ballot, that means a new ordinance, you're saying? Well, I'm just.
I, I'm gonna look to Melon for that one.
I think, um, because it would need a new, you would need to do like the whole process over, I'm a little confused about.
Right, you would do a new, um, resolution with a new ordinance, but the ordinance can be, instead of it being effective, you know, when you vote and requiring the citizens to do a referendum petition, you can go ahead and say this is gonna be on the ballot.
No, I get that part. I guess what I'm saying is, in terms of what Kim is proposing, it's all, so I guess it's really two things you're talking about. You're talking about acting on this, I guess, could we, maybe we can narrow it down to what, what are we doing with what's on the agenda today?
She's proposing killing and just letting it die, not even voting on it. So it basically, it, it runs out of time, because if you have thirty days, so it runs out of time.
But then she, there was another part of the.
But can we vote on it so that our voices are heard? I mean, why would we let it run out when we can actually make a motion to kill it?
I mean, we can, that's fine.
Oh, I don't know.
You know, I just think, you know, transparency is, okay.
That's fine. That's fine. I, I mean, I'm fine doing that, but I think that what I would.
Right, I.
If it can be done properly.
I felt, I felt this, it, it's something that may be considered again for November. I thought if the safest thing to do would be just to let it die.
Might be the easiest, but I don't think it's the safest. I think the safest thing would be.
Legally, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about politically, I don't, I'm not concerned about that, legally.
It would expire if you don't pass it, but I, so.
It could potentially come up again, is what I'm hearing, if, it could potentially come back.
On the ballot.
We're saying we want it on the ballot for people to decide. It'll be a separate line item as you go to check off your people.
Later on, we would.
Yes, not, not now. I mean, I feel like we need to do research on it and find out
Sure.
in terms of adding additional people and how to put it on there, but.
That's.
I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead and finish.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
So I was just piggybacking what you said, was that if we're talking about this motion, instead of letting it expire, we vote on it and it's Kim's proposing kill it, we'll kill it.
Or we could table it and then it just dies because of time.
Sorry, I just feel like a lot of different things coming at me one time. I, yeah, I do still, I still feel that we should, I just, I mean, to me, they're very two, they're very separate things, right? Future charter amendments, whether, what has to be proposed, how we go about proposing that, that to me is one thing. You know, it's out there, if anyone can add it, we can discuss it, but in terms of what's on the agenda today, I guess, let, yeah, the, the option is to let it die because it's going to expire anyway, but I think what I hear you saying, Robert, and I think I, I agree with this to some extent, is, sorry, I'm gathering my thoughts, uh, because it's just trying to absorb it all a little. Um, so I think I have mixed feelings about this, if I have to, to be honest, in that on one hand, I think, um, there has been a lot of public input and a lot of, um, people who have been concerned about the charter amendment for the, hopefully the last time, we will, you know, I, I've said this before, I've said it at every meeting since, um, what we should be discussing in our meetings is what's on the agenda today, and not what was on the agenda on May thirty first or December twelfth or any other time, um, so I'm gonna try my best to stick to that. And it's hard not to, it's hard to ignore the fact that, um, a lot of effort has been made that's come from the people um, who had concerns, and I was away in another country when the, most of the people decided that this was something that mattered to them, so if you don't mind, I'll take a minute, um, and just say that, um, as you all know, I've been fighting more than enough battles. When the charter amendment was proposed on August ninth, there were a number of other policies that were proposed that night that essentially isolated the vote uh, and ensured that the majority at that time had control for the most part, um, whether it was remote participation, whether it was, um, changes in rules of procedure that were discussed, um, and other ones that are proposed today, and each time, we, we voiced our opinion and we, like I said from the beginning, I always knew I would be in the minority, but, and it was the same when the charter amendment came up. When the charter amendment came up, at that point, we had just put in place a number of policies. When I say we, I mean the council, but the council majority in particular, and when it came to the charter amendment, it felt like it was a step too far, and we voiced that, and we said, look, this seems to me like it just might get controversial. I stepped away, I took my daughter to college, and before I could get back, my inbox was full with people, not people I had necessarily been spoken to. In fact, my pissy still here. I'll let him know that as much as I was opposed to it, I had taken on enough battles. Mike Spook can tell you. I looked at him, I said, I'm not taking on another battle. But the people were offended by it, whether it was the lack of participation, the lack of public involvement, the lack of information, and so you cannot forever blame the actions of the council on May thirty first. There comes a point where you can't do that anymore. You have to take responsibility, take actions that are appropriate, and decide what's appropriate. And, and, and so to me, it seems again, disingenuous to just say, well, there are reasons, well, there are reasons. Well, let's get a little more specific about what actions we take to solve what problems. This, to me, it was unnecessary, and the people decided it was unnecessary, and they're the ones who decided that, look, what are the options? What do we do? How do we make sure that our voices are heard? I don't even know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, I haven't been given enough information to find out. Maybe it is, the mayor hopes, maybe it isn't. How do we know? We haven't had a proper public input meeting. There, it's not like you can just look it up on our website. So all they asked for was the opportunity to vote, and that's the way I looked at this. So at this point, I don't know, look, I, I'm definitely not, I haven't been on Nextdoor, so I don't know what's there. And I can't condone anything like that, and I wouldn't, in fact, I would condemn that quite frankly.
They never spit on that?
But aside from that, there are also a lot of very good people who have done positive work, who've been engaged, thank goodness. We begged for that for years, and this struck a chord with them. They found it was important to them, and honestly, I don't blame them. We're talking about the difference between communicating with people, giving a form, and then, quite frankly, democracy. And I'm an immigrant, yeah, quite frankly, I'm an immigrant to this country, and I feel like sometimes this idea, these, these models that we look to are overlooked sometimes by those who I would have, I've been looked, I've looked up to my entire life before I ever moved here. So this idea that the people said, look, if there's a way to push this to the ballot, we're going to do it. I applaud them forever and ever and ever, and I will not, a- a- all other valid concerns aside, let's just remember that the idea that the people want to vote and wanna have a voice is an incredibly amazing thing that I don't think they should feel they have to apologize for at all. Um, you know, and whether it was right to propose the charter amendment, if nothing else, can we sit back and think, was that the best thing to do without truly going to the people first? And so in that vein, I will just say, because I didn't speak a lot either last time. I have a lot of data, I've got all kinds of spreadsheets, I've done a lot of other things. Um, I could, you know, talk about this on a policy point, but the reality is, at this point, if the people, these people have spent a lot of time invested in trying to start a referendum petition, which was their right, and I, and I have mixed feelings, because on one hand, I find that this is kind of positive, that the council seems to be listening, and, and that's incredibly inspiring, and I think there's two sides to this coin. People kept speaking, and the council, sounds like, finally listened. In many ways, I'd like to take that and celebrate it and not make it something that is contentious or a bad thing. Could we try to see that as a positive thing? They spoke, we listened. That's kind of where I'd like to leave it, if we can just move forward a little more positively, um, and I'll just leave it at that.
Robert?
I'm just gonna say wow.
No, I, I sent my piece. Nick, did you have any?
Yeah, I mean, be, be quite honest, and to, you know, the original thought of it was, was mine, it wasn't the mayor's, it wasn't the mayor to bring it up. It was me, probably in, you know, a little bit of a peek at what happened on May thirty first, and I went to, you know, and I, I, I said, well, you know, then we just had the mayor vote on everything, you know, the mayor should have a vote on everything, this way we, you know, we can have that, that thing. So it was, you know, it was my, my thought, I mean, you know, the rest of the council picked up on it, but, you know, I was the one who originally said that. I, I think we brought out, uh, one of the comments that one of the public made, and, and I have to agree with it, and it's been my, my thought is that, you know, we've gotten into a position now where this, this council is looking like making fools of ourselves a little bit, you know, and, and having these arguments ad nauseam and going back and forth and, you know, we've all, we've all said our piece, I think we've all made known what we, how we feel about certain ways, certain things we've done, but I think that's, again, you know, it's, that was then, and we have to move forward, this council, I think, needs to, you know, we have enough rules in our rules and procedure that, you know, we follow them consistently and we, and we try to adhere to them. We, we have protections to, to, you know, to, to cover situations like this if they're, if the rules are followed properly. And I really don't, I have, I have an issue where I, I really don't like the idea of a major, you know, the, the majority, because the majority should change. I mean, the majority shouldn't be a block majority that always, you know, it's gonna be, you know, we, we're five people, we should, you know, there should be times when history of the majority, or that's, you know, the majority can change, I mean, so I think we, we need to work towards, you know, being able to have the discussions, I mean, you know, whatever's going on in, in the courts or whatever, that's going on, that'll go through and, but I, I really don't wanna hear anymore about what happened on May thirty first or, you know, what, you know, I mean, uh, as far as I'm concerned right now, and Skoo's a council member, I mean, she, you know, she deserves whatever, you know, courtesy or, you know, things that a council, a full council member has at this point, and, uh. as far as the public, uh, you know, I think it's great, I wish the public would come to every meeting. Yeah, I wish, I wish they wouldn't only come to these meetings, I wish they'd be there at every meeting so they could see what's, what's going on. And, and I think council needs to be able to work together and, and, you know, it's, again, we need to have a, a thing where we could, you know, talk to each other without, you know, feeling that we, we, we can't trust each other to, 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 to do things. I think that's how really ideally a council works, is that, you know, I mean, in the past, I've been on a council for ten years, I mean, you know, Ron, who was, who was the council's sole mayor, would call me, I'd call him, he'd call, uh, Anthony, you know, we, it basically how the sausage is made, you know, that when you come to a meeting, you, you sort of have an idea of, you know, what, what you agree on, what you don't agree on. The meetings go smoother, you know, and, and they're not legal meetings, but that's how things get done, you know. You, you, you try and convince each other of your way of, uh, you know, of your ideas. And, you know, and sometimes in, in them conversations, things are said or something and you've sort of liked to have the opportunity, it's, it's not gonna now, but then meeting somebody says, well, you said this on, I got you saying this, you know. So we, we need to have a trust level and a, and a thing that we can work, I think we have that all here. I, you know, Count, uh, though, attorney says that probably the best way to do this would be to, you know, table it and just let it die. And I'm not even sure that I, I think we need to even have a vote on it in the future because I'm not sure that we need to have the mayor vote. I think we, we could explore other options that would make it a lot, you know, expanding the council maybe or whatever, there's other options, I think we could go with it. But, uh, at, at this point, I think, uh, I mean, I'm, I, I could go either way, but I, by going by what council is saying, I would think, I would say we just table it and drop it. And then, you know, then we'll, then we'll have discussions about whether we wanna put it on for a vote for next year or we wanna, how we wanna do with council and stuff. But I think that's, at this point, you know, what my feeling is. I mean, I could go either way to, to vote to kill it or just to, you know, to let it expire and kill itself, you know. But either way, I think that's, uh, thing. And again, I wish the public would come to all of our meetings, you know, so we could have, you know, they could see what's going on and they could, uh, you know, be better informed. But I think, I think the, the, I think we, we basically, I don't wanna go back and over what's gone on in the past and what's thing. And I think we need to stop whatever little, you know, sniping we put in, you know, when we say something, you know, it's little trigger words or little trigger things that, you know, I think we need to, to move forward and say, and that's a do what this council was elected to do. And that's the, you know, serve the, the residents of the village as best we can and, and, uh, move things forward and, and have our agenda, you know, we stick to our agenda, we have items on there. We don't go off on, on these tangents that, you know, we start to, again, start getting into personal things. And, you know, and every, every decision the council makes is, is not a personal, you know, there should be no personal, you know, we can, we can, we can disagree on policy and we can, you know, uh, stick to our position. But, you know, we can't then make it personal, you know, or start making accusations or, or saying things that, you know. Uh, I think we have to keep it on a level of, you know, professional level that we, you know, we, we're gonna have things that we can disagree on, it's, it's inevitable, you know, and like I said, the majority can change. I mean, things, you know, so, uh, I think we need to work towards that. We need to try and get this council back to, you know, its decorum and its way, the reason to run, the way we, we speak to each other and, 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 uh, and just have in mind that we're here to do what we were elected to do, to, to serve the village and to serve the interests of the village, not our own personal interest sometimes. Or sometimes we, I think we, we all guilty a little bit of having, you know, sticking a little too much worried about our own personal ego or our own personal interest on what it is and not, you know, uh, being flexible enough to maybe move off. So, you know, I think there's things we can work on and I think we need to work on and we should, you know. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that. So, and that's, you know, my position on it. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm already either way, I just, you know, going by council's, uh, thing that we, I, I think we probably should just, you know, table it, let it die and, and I said, well, then we'll discuss later on if we wanna put it up to a vote next time. I don't even know, again, I'm not sure that I, I even think that we need to consider that again, but.
Well put, Nick, very well put. Did, were you finished?
Yeah.
Did you have anything?
Just quick, the only reason I'm, I feel like, I, I hear what the attorney told you all, but it's, it's an actual ordinance to consider amendment in the village charter. It's, it just seems like it, it's supposed to be voted on if you're saying it doesn't have to be. But the result's the same, as far as I'm concerned, so I'm okay. But I just wanna read it as an item. I think someone wants to go back six months from now and look at the, the agenda or the minutes. Do they know how to find the item and what was decided?
You can always propose a motion, just procedurally, procedural information, that's the way. You can always put a motion on the floor, that, that's up to you. I don't know how I feel either way, I'm just letting you know.
Well, then I'll make a, a motion then.
Well, I have spoken to it, that's okay, that's okay. I mean, I'm fine with the motion, but I just wanna kind of clarify some things. And, um, I would like to comment just on this last go around. There were no interruptions, I appreciate that. I think we need to get back to Robert's rules of orders and follow them, whether it's a point of order issue or whatever. Allow members to speak and make notes like I was making as I was hearing things and stuff and then bring them up when you're ready to talk. But I think that, that, that goes a long way with civility where we earn the respect of the community. Cause to your point, Nick, I think they do look at us like, you know, we're, we're out of control. But a lot of it starts with the disrespect when we start interrupting and stuff. So I appreciate that, that we were able to get through that round and not, uh, do that. Um, I do, I did make notes on that thing, but I respectfully disagree that, I don't know if the people have decided that it was or was not necessary, like you had mentioned there. So I respectfully disagree. Yes, we could get some emails, we got thirty or forty emails that, and people showed up, that's great, I like that. But there was a time when I was allowed to vote and that was taken away from me a year ago. I didn't make a stink about it because it, you know, it was, it was, it was, it was limited items that I could vote on, appointments, hirings and firings, that sort of thing. But then that was taken away and with no change. That was just a decision made by the previous council.
Just point of information, it was a, um, you just had the ability to vote on appointments, so that.
Right, appointments and, and hirings and too, so.
So that, it's just, again, because of, for transparency.
No, I know, I said that, that's, I was, I did, I did have some voting privileges, so the public knows. But that was when I did take action on the voting privilege, they recognized that there was a little disagreement between one of the previous council members and our attorney, which he pulled out the rule and said that I was. And then what the previous council, just for point to note to the community, they added it to the next agenda to remove my ability to vote on, on, uh, members. So I didn't push back, I think Nick.
Not yet, this one, this council just write, you know.
I said previous council.
Okay, I, I just.
So I think Nick, at that time, we, you know, respectfully disagreed. And then, you know, then you brought this to me and thank you for, again, pointing that out cause I think the community believes that it was me that was driving this to make this change and that was not the case. Um, so I appreciate you being upfront with that, Nick, again, and, and coming to that. Um, and a reminder that the previous, previous council changed the charter twice right before the community without even, I mean, it was on the agenda, but they changed it twice without it going to a referendum and to be voted on. And that was for me to be a mayor my term for four years versus two years. And again, I was against that because I think the mayor is, is as pain as it is to go out and try and get reelected every two years, I think it has to switch and it switches with the councils designed that way. Um, that the mayor doesn't run and mayor doesn't have a four-year term. So I'm still in favor of a two-year term. So for those who think that I have this power graph and stuff, I would have been in favor of a four-year term cause I wouldn't have to run every two years. But I think as the process, I think that's the way to go. But the previous council changed that charter to the community. They changed it to a four-year and then got it back, changed back again when we started disagreeing on some things. And they, they, they changed it back right before the window of when we had to, uh, you had to sign up or make your declaration if you were gonna run. So they were able to do that. But two wrongs don't make a right. Um, I agree with Nick on the additional council members adding a representative. And, um, I don't know how we go about that. And I would maybe look to use if we added like districts or something like that, where there's representatives of like big voting block, whether it's Weddington Chase or Marvin Creek or something like that, or an ad at large.
And that's some more of the sc- well, of discussion, y'all.
Right, I, I am all in favor, I think that was mentioned before, which I thought was a great idea. The problem is we are so small and that, you know, things can change. What I really was, when Nick came to me with this and stuff, what I was, we were really going toward, just to be clear, is we didn't want any surprises and that's what we were fearful of, that at any given moment, if we're short just one person, if someone gets a head cold, um, the, the other side could basically add something to the agenda. And, and there's, you know, it could be voted on and that's, you know, but it, but.
Point of information, I don't mean to interrupt, this, this point of information, which is in Robert's rules of procedures, is when you say we, you're referring to your majority. Is that what you mean? We, if some, if one of, if someone is missing.
Anyway, a, 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 anytime, cause the pendulum can swing in a year from now and you can find yourself with three or two councilmen on one side and the other two, and then the mayor favors one. So, and I hate to call it majority, you and I talked about majority, but, cause we don't always vote the same. But what we're saying is when it, the pendulum swings the other way and say you have someone and you, you two are still on the board and you, come November, somebody gets elected, is it in favor of you? You're gonna want that protection, that if one of you guys are gone and you have a situation where two to one is here, they can add something to the agenda. We were trying to get to a point where nothing was put on the agenda within forty-eight hours cause it was not transparent to the community. And that's where we got kind of sideways. But as we go forward though, um, and, and that can work either way. Um, I'd, I'd really like to see the civility. You know, you see what's going on in the country and it's, it's so unfortunate, but, and we can't control what the community is doing and saying, but we can control what we as council members are saying. And when there's false accusations suggested to us, it's, it just, it, it just adds to the community just jumping on. I mean, I had individuals in public comment suggesting that I was lining my pockets. And I'm, I'm like, you know, it's, it's, you know, we, we don't have libel laws for people like ourselves, but I would be curious to see if we did, if they would be so brazen to say that. Because we, we constantly get it and, and I don't look at Nextdoor either, but I hear that Nextdoor is, they're parading us, calling us names, suggesting that we're, um, nefarious, doing something nefarious. I welcome a, uh, full investigation on all of us. Um, and, and to clear this up, but, but we as councilmen, as we're sitting here, if we disagree, respect the fact that we disagree. And let's not get into the, you know, letters that are sent out to the community suggesting that we are doing something illegal because that is not the case. And if it is, then provide the facts. And just being copied on an email is not providing facts. It's, it's, it doesn't make you complicit in anything. It just, you know, as a mayor, it makes me more aware of what's happening out there, but it doesn't make me complicit or any, anybody else. So as we go forward, I'd like to see as, and, and, and we can, in my view, just let this die and just say, hey, you know, um, it, it runs out of time, it didn't get, uh, voted on and then we, we put it to a referendum, but we also look into adding another person on the council or two people on the council and, and consider that. So with that, I'll, I'll put it to the floor. Or Robert, you had a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I just, I, I feel the need just to clarify that. Because I really do believe that a lot of people here at this table are trying to move forward, at least in my relationships, I find it helpful to respectfully point out though what does not help a relationship and request, kindly request, that people understand that from the other point of view. So if you don't mind, let's just like to take out a moment because I think the intentions are good, but I'm not so sure that, that the wording or the way it's presented is what people mean, I hope. Because I think when we talk about this idea that, um, I can imagine how hurtful it must be to have insinuations made that are not true. Um, and to have your, under, your intentions misunderstood and then have stories flourish from there. And ironically, that is exactly what has happened since May thirty first because we've taken that date and, uh, trust me, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't wanna go over this again, but this is why I'm saying this. Even when saying on one hand, look, you know, we don't do anything illegal and why don't people understand that? The majority on that day, and I don't really wanna talk about the actual action, there was a majority in that meeting and that's politics. And I find that this is really yet again, a strange way of framing up a scenario that has occurred since nineteen ninety-four in Marvin, that if you, one person was missing, there was a different majority. If someone else was gone, there was a different majority. The word exploit is extremely insinuating of things that were illegal or somehow, um, you know, wrong. And let me just say this for the record, cause there's some, another person who's been around a long time, just as long as me. We had, I think he's moved out of the area, so I might, might be able to say this. There was a minority for a long time, there have been, um, Mr. Ross Overby. I, uh, remember because I was not, I was actually on staff when he was around. And, um, he was often in the minority and he came and he showed up. But I promise you that if Ross Overby, that there were times that the majority didn't care what they were doing because there was a minority there and they brushed him aside. But I promise you, when he missed, when Mr. Overby had the opportunity to have someone on his side and act the way he wanted to act in a meeting, he did. And I promise you, you can go to every single place around the village or around the county or around the country and I will tell you that, right or wrong, we can talk about that all day, but we can't be naive either. At the end of the day, when a minority feels that they are the minority, and, you know, we said we don't like that term, but let's not be naive and start painting that with a brush that it doesn't deserve any more than any other action in any other village and any other municipality around the country. If you're in the minority, you take advantage of the opportunities you have to get what you can the way you need to. I'm not saying that every action is right, I wouldn't say that. But I don't want us to be naive, we're all big people here, we've been around the block, we know what happens in real life. And so to come say that that meeting is the most egregious thing that ever happened, it seems to me at some point, you, you, you're asking for it to carry some weight and trying to convey again to the public that there was some sort of nefarious criminal thing when it was politics. Bad politics, good politics, that's what it was. And I'll just stay there, because if you want the whole thing to change, you want the discussion to change, you want the narrative to change, then everybody has to change the narrative, everyone, not just one side. That's all I have to say.
Then, go ahead, Nick.
And again, I, I, I agree that, that, I, we've, we've said what we've said, we've, we've put our positions out there. We know what, what we did or what we, why we felt the way we do. I just, like I said, I, I just don't wanna, it's over, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that, that's over, that's the past. We have to move forward and to keep bringing up things in the past and to keep going over or, you know, picking at scabs of air, starting a purpose, you know. So at this point, I think, you know, whatever, like I said, whatever's in the courts is in the courts, whatever the court decides we'll live with, we'll have to, you know, accept and that's, uh, and that's the way we will. But I don't think we need to, I think we need to put it in the past and we need to stop, you know, stop having to have to keep, uh, reliving it or whatever, you know, and move forward as best we can. I mean, I can't speak for everybody, I can't, you know, say, but I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't wanna talk about it anymore. You know, uh, just move forward, you know.
And, and if I were to add anything onto that, um, Mary is that, um, regardless of what people have done in the past and councils have done in the past, taking advantage of this, doesn't necessarily make it right. And yes, it does happen, but we have an opportunity and we have a duty. Me personally, I'll take it on and we need to take it on individually about being transparent to the community. about being transparent to the community where there are no surprises. So when you have that, that two to one advantage and you add something that the community is not going to be aware of, that's where I think it's unfair to the community and then that goes to the people who are doing it. So it, it's, it's on them. Yes, they have every legal right to, you know, take advantage of it. It's not saying, but what, what we're saying is that we wanted, we tried to establish a forty-eight hour, unless it was something minor, a forty-eight hour notice to the community. So when the community looks at that agenda, they say, yeah, there's nothing in there I wanna, I wanna look at. But then to find out after the meeting was held, oh, they added something that I may have wanted to, to speak about, that seems to be unfair. Regardless of what size, if you're on the, the two side or the, the, if you have the numbers or not, look at, look at ourselves individually. Are, are we gonna want to do that? And the pendulum is gonna swing back and forth as we go forward. And, and that's where this whole thing come up, that came up with Nick approaching myself and then me talking with Kim. So we'll, I agree, Nick, we should leave it. Let this, let's move forward because we have a lot of business to take care of. So if you don't mind, I know, Robert, you were gonna propose a motion. Did you have that?
Yeah, I agree with moving forward. To be honest, I'm not sure how to word the motion other than I make a motion to.
Withdraw or rescind?
Can I use the word defeat?
No.
I said no. An audience number?
That's me. Mellie, what's, what's, what's the best way to, to do this? I would think just table it.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to remove ordinance OR dash two zero one eight dash one zero dash zero two ordinance to consider amending the village charter to allow mayor to vote on all matters.
Indefinitely.
Just remove it from the
Remove it from?
Agenda, the, I don't.
We just talked about it.
Let me, let me go back to defeat. Of the motions, defeat.
So you're actually wanting us to take a vote then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just be done with it.
Okay. And then can you make another motion?
Can you say, can you say it again? I want to make, I want to make sure that it makes sense. Like if we're voting for.
Do we make it? Well, let me ask this. Do we make a motion to table it?
If we table it, what happens is
It just dies, right?
It, it never was voted on and we move forward and then in the agenda for the next meeting, we maybe start discussion about putting it on the voting thing for November. We gotta get it in before a certain timeframe is what fits an ordinance and we're adding or changing any kind of charter, in my understanding.
You would have to start the process again.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Let me do it this way.
But then to be voted on rather than us just making the decision, we would be saying in this charter, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would be voted on in the next year.
Right. If you want to, if you want to consider it again as a referendum, I don't need to do it that way.
That's something we'd have to discuss at the meeting, whether we want to do that.
Right. If you think to do the resolution again.
Time voting on that.
Back in the newspaper. It, ta, I'll be honest with you, tabling to me, it's about intent. And when you officially, when you make a motion to table something, you're putting it on for later consideration at some point, right? So if, if your intent is to have us vote for the rescinding or the removal or the withdrawal of, then I would try to choose one of those words and just, that, that would be my suggestion. Or you had it before. You said, uh, remove. And I would just say, uh, what it, what was it? Indefinitely, right?
Okay.
I mean, if you want to try that.
Well, Nick, you spoke.
If I understand your intention.
That's, my intention is just to make it public record and table it and just scroll it along. I just want it on the minutes. So I, I'm, I'll, I'll make a motion to remove ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero dash zero two ordinance to consider amending village charter, allow mayor to vote on all matters and do so indefinitely.
Well, if we do so indefinitely, then we can't put it on the referendum, right?
Right.
Yeah.
This one couldn't.
You don't have to say definitely.
Right. Right. It has to be anyone. I think indefinitely. It could come up again. So I don't think that word does anything.
Sorry.
Well, writing. Not this one couldn't come up again. If you're using the ordinance number, right, and you're making records for the ordinance number. Right. It's not, it's not, not gonna affect your inability, your ability to introduce the same thing later.
So pardon me, my, my motion's the same without the word indefinitely?
Just to remove it completely in that, that's it.
Yeah, and are you okay with that, Nick?
For any future consideration or, sorry, I didn't hear it. Sorry.
Say it one more time.
Uh, I make a motion to remove ordinance OR dash two zero one eight dash one zero dash zero two ordinance to consider amending village charter to allow mayor to vote on all matters. Period.
So all we're doing is removing it. We're not voting on it. We're just removing it.
Voting to remove it from the agenda.
Yeah. So it's not tabled. It's just removed from the agenda. A second vote hadn't taken place because we were.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
Essentially, to be fair, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were gonna have public comments and we talked about, like, still keeping on, if we just removed it at the beginning of the meeting, that's essentially doing the same thing. What we got a chance to do is all speak our minds about it.
Sure.
And now we're just removing it.
Correct.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
We all good by that? Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, next up on the agenda is, uh,
Can we take it two minutes?
Two minutes, right?
No. Five.
Five. Five is good.